What of appeals will now come to water? Please call the roll.
Mr. White?
Present.
Mr. Gassano?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mr. Callen?
Present.
Mrs. Curley?
Present.
Wishing to accept the minutes on the last regular meeting of December 5th.
Oh, well, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor, opposed? First case will be number 9806 13 O'Leary Place. Petitioner William Butt, Bu- whatever. To allow demolition and reconstruction of a 9 by 19 first floor addition to an existing single-family residence located upon an undersized lot, 4,217 square feet, in zoning District R2 that encroaches within the minimum rear setback. Are you here?
Yes.
Oh, come on up here. Give your name and address to the Secretary.
My name's Mark Correa. I'm actually a builder. And, uh, yeah, I live away.
Why do you want to knock this down and start over?
63 Commonwealth.
Oh, sorry. Why do you want to do this? Why do you want to knock this down?
Uh, the, um, the addition is dilapidated. It needs to be rebuilt.
You have plans for the additions? You have plans for the new work?
No, not at this time.
How come?
How come? Uh, we want to pay the money for the plans.
Oh, yeah, people said, uh... We have to know where you're going to do it.
It's going to be the exact same thing that's there.
Is it the exact same thing?
Yes.
Same dimensions?
Same dimensions. It's just the foundation's deteriorating. The walls, the roof, it's all deteriorating.
Is the foundation alright, the building?
No, it's going to be, uh, removed and, uh, replaced.
I see.
Well, the whole idea is to come here. You're supposed to spend the money to come here. You just can't come here and say, "We're going to do exactly what it is."
Why not? I don't understand. It's just going to be... I got pictures that, uh, show what the addition is now.
Well, I saw it.
And it's an exist... There's a plan right there of the existing conditions.
The application's pretty specific about what he's supposed to bring with him, isn't it?
Yeah.
Did you read the application?
I did.
That would've explained a lot to you. Explain to you how you need to have drawings, you need to have a shell loss, everything that you were looking to do, so...
We need to have... Ask me so many questions.
I thought pictures, uh, tell a thousand words. It's, uh, pictures are...
So you want to have buildings?
Do you have the pictures there?
Yeah, if you want to play them what's there, you can send somebody a good job of it. We're putting that...
Exactly what's there. I don't think, you know, a thousand bucks, spend a thousand dollars to have plans made or something that can't be, you know, what I...
Well, everybody else has to do it.
Yeah.
Everybody comes here, has to do that.
Really? I didn't know that.
Same roof line?
Pardon me?
Same roof line?
Yes, everything is going to be exactly the same.
And is it going to blend well with the main house?
Yes, yep.
That's why it's going to match exactly. Yes. That's what I want here.
Yep. Everything's going to be, uh... Doesn't even look like it'll be, uh, a new addition. It's going to look exactly the same as it does now.
But we don't like that. You said it's all dilapidated. Don't make it look like it's...
Well, no.
That's what I mean. That's why I'm asking you. Is it going to even blend well with the main building?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
I hate to put words in your mouth, but I... You're not giving us the right answers.
So these are the two pictures, the front and the back?
Yes.
What does the side look like? Are there any windows?
That is the side right there, and that's the side near the back.
What about the 19?
It was a private property. I wasn't able to take a picture of it.
Is there a window on that side?
Boy, you've got some good pictures.
That's fabulous. That was from a fall, too. That was from a fall, too.
So have you done any sketches? I mean, have yourself? Have you casted the Java? What have you done to show? Have you done anything?
No, nothing, other than, uh, fill out the application for this. You know, they had a building, I know it's on the lot line, so, you know, we need an okay from you guys to do this, to tear it down and rebuild it. Uh, but it's, it's not going to be any bigger. It's going to be the exact same size you see there. Uh, the exact same size it says in the, uh, the application, and, uh...
Is there going to be a door there?
The door is actually going on the other side, into the backyard.
So you're changing?
We got changes.
Okay?
I said, "We got changes."
And you got the other... Do you have the other, uh...
Well, just have the two pictures you showed.
Right. Well, where that other side, side view is, uh, that's where that door is going, into their private backyard.
You mean this here?
So you're going to move the deck to the other side of the house?
No, this... Well, uh, no, there's just going to be a stairway going down from the door on the side. That deck is being removed.
So this is going to go?
It's not going back.
You're not going to have a door on the window here?
Not on that side. It's going to be on the other side.
But I guess it's not going back exactly like it is in the drawing, is that...
Any other questions from the board?
So you said the deck's coming off.
The deck is coming off. It's not going back.
So, all right. So the issue, the certified plot plan that you gave us here was just done a couple of months ago. Doesn't have the deck. It shows the deck on the right hand side.
Well, the, uh, dotted slash line on there is where the work is being performed.
Oh, yeah, I realized that. But you... This thing is coming out.
So you're rem... You're removing the deck?
The deck is coming out, yes.
Are you going to have a deck on the other side?
No, there's no... I'm not doing... There's no deck on the other side as of the plan right now.
Any other questions from the board?
Because that wouldn't approach, right? That wouldn't approach. Yeah, that would... We'd have to get a...
So we give them a couple of minutes to look at the law.
I have to come back with some comments.
Have another one, huh?
Yeah.
I don't think so. Hearing none. Are there any... Anybody here want to have anything to say about this? Any?
I know, I have one question.
Hearing none, hearing is closed for those...
He's going to make it blend well. Are you going to make it blend well? Blend?
Yes, absolutely.
Are you hard to hear?
Yeah, yes, I am. Sorry. Didn't want to hear it, it's a tight...
Oh, you didn't... You didn't want to explain it, when you hear it, it's...
No one wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone speaking in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, hearing is closed for those to speak in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to request that it be continued till we got at least a sketch showing where the, where the door is going. Um, this, these should... This should really be changed, your certified plot plan. Um, I want to see a sketch that shows... And I don't have to spend a lot of money, but I want to see a sketch that shows the three sides of that, of that addition.
All right, I agree with all my motion.
So we'll see where the windows are. We'll see where the stairs are. And if he's planning a deck, then that, I mean, that, that may be something that he would need relief for. Because again, it's, it's going down. It would be encroaching on the back. So you better figure that out.
Okay.
And whatever, just come in.
All right.
Uh, next meeting. When's that next meeting?
February 20th.
February 20th. All right, so I would request that it be continued with the stipulations that we see a sketch.
Oh, sir.
Showing, um, you know, just a little bit of detail, doors, windows, stairs, things like that.
I can do that, right?
Yeah.
And I'll bring in copies for everybody, six copies.
That's it. Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Gassano, please.
Uh, so when you take this door off, are you going to put a double-hung window in there for each of us?
There'll be a window on that side, yes.
Double-hung, so the egress possibly? If there's been a emergency?
Yeah, well, that's, that's one room, so there'll be a door on the other side.
Yeah, but when you're taking away egress on this side, so that's... That'll probably sound to get out their heads a bit.
This will be continued to February 20th.
Thank you both.
So make a motion to continue it.
And you second it.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Cole, submitted by Mr. Callen. Please call the roll.
Mr. White?
Yes, continue.
Mr. Gassano?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to continue.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, to continue.
All set? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, bye.
Oh, stealing your pen.
Case number 9807 12 O'Callahan Way, parcel number 023353117, petitioner Jenna and Diana Iandolo, to allow construction of a 16 by 12 deck to the rear of an existing non-conforming single-family residence upon an undersized lot, 5,475 square feet, having insufficient frontage, 65 feet, in zoning District R2 that encroaches into the minimally required rear setback. Give your names and your address to the secretary.
Diana Iandolo. Jenna Iandolo, 12 O'Callahan Way.
So your buddy started to work on that, didn't he?
Correct.
Yeah.
How come?
Did somebody start to?
Uh, somebody pointed out that we didn't have the right permit.
Right permit.
Yeah. We had siding work done, and our contractor had the permit. And then we hired somebody else to do the deck. And turns out, he was not doing things correctly. So we ended up firing him. And we had our siding guy come back to look at possibly doing the deck. So he kind of... Well, he had to redo everything that the other guy did and started from there. But I don't know if he didn't know that he didn't have the permit. Um, I guess that's our job, but we didn't know.
So I mean, what has been done? Has that been approved by ISD? I mean, up to now, has someone, an inspector worked there and approved it?
No, no. What... Somebody had said, "You only have permits for electrical and siding." So we went down to the office to get the permit for the deck. And then, um, we realized that we're too close. So they told us...
But I mean, when do they have you call for an inspection? Not when it's all done, when you... You know, they usually look at the foundation or whatever.
Okay.
Has anyone been down there?
Not that I know of, no.
They don't have a permit.
Yeah, we went to get the permit.
They don't have a permit, so nobody's been out from ISD.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, that's, and that's, that's our fault. But we're, uh, we're learning as we go here as homeowners. And, uh, we're trying to fix it now, so...
All right.
How far off the ground is the deck?
Uh, a little above five... Yeah.
So it's coming out the first floor? Coming out of you with the first floor?
Yes. It's a ranch, so there's only that floor. But the... It slopes down, so it's high from there.
Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in opposition? What is the wish of the board?
Motion to move much further. Make motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. De Sono, second by Mr. Cole to grant. Please call the roll.
Mr. White?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Gassano?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes, to grant.
Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it.
Case number 9808 10 Minor Street. Petitioner Anastasio...
Thank you.
... lost the pool, by his attorney Samuel Vitali, to allow construction of a detached garage that encroaches into the minimally required side yard setback, 5 feet 7 inches, upon an undersized lot, 4,852 square feet, having insufficient frontage, 31.78 feet, in zoning District R4 with a single-family residence constructed thereon.
My attorney Vitali is Anthony Scousers. Um, his parents own the property. Uh, they do not reside there. They live at 15 Kenone Way Out. Uh, he lives there with his growing family. It's growing as we speak. He has two twins, three, child 14, and his wife was here...
Yesterday.
Yesterday. So he's got a, a smaller house and a growing family. Um, on, and it's a, an irregular-shaped lot, which has a right-of-way which extended to the rear. As I understand, on the right-of-way, it used to be a 12-minute street that became a 20-something Murphy Ave, because it now fronts on Murphy. So the, there's a right-of-way. Stockade Fence is the property line. There's a chain link fence. And he had put up garages and understood that you could be three feet from the line with an accessory structure, except that this accessory structure is in the front yard and doesn't have 7 and 1/2 feet, which is a required sideline. He met with Mr. Richard, Keith Richards, the building department, who said that, uh, the height's 12 feet. That's fine, it's not more than 15. Lot coverage, as Mr. Reed's plan indicates, is not in excess of 30 feet. But because of the location of the, uh, side of the garage, it does not have 7 and 1/2 feet. He understood it needed three. So it's got more than three, but less than 7 and 1/2. It's got a 5.7, uh, sideline. So it was constructed in error, and Mr. Richards told him he had to come and get permission to have the sideline be within the requisite sideline for a, uh, a residence. And that's 7 and 1/2 feet. And that's why we're here. Um, the, uh, the garage, uh, parks an automobile. Has his kids, uh, saw the basketball toys and things like that. And so, um, following the recommendation of the building department, we filed this. Mr. Reed did the plan. Um, he showed parking, because you want to see parking, but there's clearly parking spaces as well in the garage. And what we're trying to do is have the, uh, garage that was built with less than, uh, 7 and 1/2 feet be approved. It's got 5.7, uh, but it's still greater than three. An, an accessory structure can be within three feet of the, the sideline. But the problem with this accessory structure, if you saw the lot, is it's in the... Essentially, it's in the front yard. So it's got the requisite front setback. And he's got the required sideline on the other side. He doesn't have it on this side. And that's the relief that he seeks.
All right, when was the garage built?
Uh, October.
Did you pull permits?
No.
Bingo, there we are again. It's a little bit more of the story. So the garage was built... So how... Did somebody say some... How did, how did you get here? You already built the garage.
Uh, Keith Richards visited the property and inspected it.
Oh, and he just said, "Hey..."
You don't have 7 and 1/2.
You don't have a permit either, probably.
Yeah, but, but he said, "You don't... You can't be within, uh, the sideline."
Why did Mr. Richards show up? Uh, there was, I guess, what Mr. Richards had told me was it was a anonymous file.
How close is the next building to, to the building he's putting up?
Excuse me?
In the next lot. How close is it to the line?
Your neighbor on, uh, 14th, yeah. Yeah.
Between's probably, I would say, at minimum, 8 feet and 1/2, maybe 11 feet. If you're in between all that, I haven't measured.
Otherwise, from the property line to this building, it's like feet?
From, from the prop... From her property line, because the driveways are but one another, it's probably 5 and 1/2 feet.
No, but I'm saying the building is...
The building, not the property.
The building for the...
Forget the lines, the building. How much space is there?
I'm sorry, I'm misunderstanding your question. I apologize. From her building to my building is probably 8 and 1/2 feet to 11 feet. Her house to my property line is probably 6 feet, 6 and 1/2 feet.
No, no, we don't...
How can that be? You have to get 10 feet from, with the right-of-way and the... The 10... The right-of-way's 10 feet wide alone, so how can her house be with 8 feet?
Uh, maybe I'm misjudging the distance, but I believe that's about it. I think...
It's probably a little bit more than what he's thinking, but it is... It does on that... It's on that line. It's not too far from it, yeah.
So the reason that he needs to solve this problem is he wants to...
Yeah.
Refinance. His parents can't refinance the property, even though they own it without a mortgage, because they don't live there. He lives there. But if they were to convey it to him, he can't get any mortgage, because when they do a plot plan, he won't be able to get title insurance, because he's got the zoning violation. So this is a step along the way to have... If this were to be approved, then his parents would deed on the property. Now he would own the property mortgage-free. Um, we would solve the zoning problem, and then he'd be able to get a mortgage and refinance, because as I say, he's got a growing family. And the house that was built in 1860, I believe.
So he's really got a hardship. And he's got another one.
Well, that, yeah, but, but when I... When they first all came to see me, I said, "Well, don't you refinance the property?" And they had a very good answer. The bank won't refinance, because we own it, but we don't live there. He lives there.
Yeah.
And so it's, it's... You've got to get everything lined up. But the problem with getting everything lined up is that you can't get title insurance if there's a, a zoning violation.
Yeah. Yes, that's right.
Why'd you build the garage with a permit? Just curiously. You didn't think you needed a permit to build?
There's, there's actually a pretty... I'll tell you my answer. My answer was, if... Originally, I had a top wall. There was a 20 by 22 top wall. It was just plastic with, uh, you know, steel tubing, whatever, whatnot. It was a kit that come... There was an accessory kit to buy, to put on. And that's how that garage really was built. And then I built an extension off the back of the kit that actually was built as a mobile structure. That's why I didn't think it was necessary for the permit. But from what I understood from Mr. Richards was, because it's in the front of the house, considered with the front of the house, then I would need it. If I had my house in the front and had put that kit in the back, I would say, "Okay."
That's where accessory buildings usually are, the rear. They're not allowed in the front usually.
You still would have to pull a permit, though, to build a, uh, a, a, something bigger than 150 square feet, isn't it? That's the across one. The garage? Well, you're saying it's a whole structure.
Exactly, that's originally how I answered, yes. It was a top wall, but it's a tent.
Right, but now it's a building.
Yes, it was a kit that I couldn't... It was a... It was actually bought as a kit. You put on the sides, like, instead of the vinyl top. So that's I... It was my fault.
So we're really not allowing you to build the structure? You're asking to keep a pre-existing structure?
But it doesn't have the requisite sideline, correct?
Don't say it, but the way it's worded...
Yeah, but the way...
You allow the construction...
I... Look, I'll say it again. I don't write the... I, I write the ads, but then someone else writes them. So the way it's worded is not necessarily that what I write.
That's what happens.
You have utilities out there? You have electric, electricity?
Yes.
You know, this board has to go out and look at every piece of property that comes before us. But there's no way on God's earth that I was going to walk in there with all those cameras and a big sign, "You are being recorded, you are being..." You know, what, what is all that?
Uh, the, the original purpose of all those cameras is to my next-door neighbor. The next-door neighbor who runs the body shop there is really not community-friendly at all. Uh, he, he doesn't like anybody in the city. And then I could go on for hours upon hours upon hours.
Well, that's all right. I just wondered. I never, I never saw anything like that before.
Essentially, the two cameras that are on the gator is, is focused on his, his lot, because his... He had to deed all the land from the body shop to build his mechanic shop. And it ends up that the stick alliance on Minor Street, and it backs us up in the summer. I've been side-spoilt multiple times with my cars, because it's resident permit parking on Minor Street. In fact, it recently happened in the snowstorm. They took out the posts out of my vehicle and was caught on camera. But that is essentially why the cameras are there.
Well, I, that's... I just was curious. That's all, but thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I can add one factor. I called Counsel Capano, uh, and asked him if anybody had contacted him. I called Counselor Capano and asked him if anybody had contacted him. He said he had no calls on this matter.
There's no letter or anything, so. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
The petition before.
Well, the chair will second that. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Gisano?
No.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Crowley?
Yes, to grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the baby.
Yeah.
Have a great night, ladies and gentlemen.
Case number 9809, Eight Winds Are Ab, petition of Crystal Barrera to allow alteration and extension of an existing wooden deck that encroaches within the minimum side yard setback attached to an existing non-conforming two-family residence upon an undersized lot, 3,415 square feet, having insufficient frontage, 45 feet, three inches, in zoning District R1. Want to come over here and talk to me and give your names and addresses to the secretary?
I'm Crystal Barrera.
This is what's going on.
And we're at both at Eight Winds Are Ab.
Is your deck built too?
Yes, it is.
How come?
His name is Jesus Feliciano.
How come your deck is built?
Um, so we bought our home with the original deck that was there, the one that's in the zoning, not legal. Jesus.
Jesus, J, yes, U S. Feliciano F E. L I C I A N O.
Where's your address?
Eight Winds Are Ab.
So we actually hired a contractor. Someone came out, we got the permit to do it. They did all the work and then when they came back to stamp the permits saying that the work was done, they said that there was an issue with our existing deck in the zoning area.
I guess what Roger told us was that the, um, the original deck was here, um, is too close to the, um, neighbor's house. Um, but when, when they, when the deck was done, the deck was, um, the existing deck stayed in the same place. Um, we just extended it the other way where Roger went towards the even built, you know, past the other way. So we re, we re-deed the plans again and we decided to, instead of going the original way we were going to go, to leave the part where it's closest to the neighbor's house, which is, I believe is, um, Four Winds Are Ab. Um, the closest, we did the exact same way, just, you know, we changed the boards, the rails, and just extend the opposite way. Um, we have pictures of the existing, um, the existing, um, deck that's still there, you know, the process of when he was doing it and not.
I get a question first. I didn't in my packet get a plot plan for this. Was there a plot plan submitted? Did you, did you guys?
I think I have.
This is what was submitted.
All right, so I have, I didn't say it.
This is the plot planner.
Um, this is what, this is what, yup, that's what Roger gave us. Um, Roger, can you come for, for us again?
I have it over here if you're looking for it.
Did you see, did you get one? Can I see that? That's probably, so this is what you, so you didn't go to a civil engineer to have him draw the, draw the, draw the deck, right? You did it, you didn't?
Um, we had, uh, the, the, the contractor. He was the one that drew the, um, originally he was speaking to Keith and then from Keith, I guess, um, Keith was out of safe that we and Roger ended up coming out last.
Do you want to look at this deal?
I'm sorry?
Does, does the application say certified, certified?
Yeah. You know, you're supposed to have a certified plot plan, you know, not, not this.
We didn't know, um, like, like I said, the permit was pulled by, um, our contractor and everything, you know, we never, never came to City Hall until Roger came out last.
We purchased that home last year. We're first time homeowners. So we did it the way that we were told to do it and I guess we expected that they were telling us it was the right way.
Where's their application?
Did you fill out an application?
See if I gave it to him.
Yes, what's, what it was in the front, that's what, um, Roger gave, um, Roger gave to fill out and then.
I gave him.
We came in and we filled everything out with Roger. He told us exactly how to put it together and what you guys needed and that's how we did it.
Yeah, I know, but there's different types of permits, an application, all that you need. Did you read it before you signed it?
We didn't take care of anything.
So you didn't sign a building permit at all?
Our contractor took care of the permit and all that. He told us that he was speaking to Keith and that everything was all set.
But you would have had to sign it, even if, even if your contractor pulled a building permit, if it could go through, you have to release.
Okay.
With a signature from yourself.
Yup. See, I wouldn't know that, like, this is my first time around, so.
For them to get a permit, they would have had to sign it.
Yeah, right, yes.
So someone was lying there.
Yeah, and I'm learning that now.
Always read things before you sign it.
Absolutely. Well, I feel like when, when I'm like, okay, I'm going to hire a contractor, he, he says, I'm going to take care of this, this and this, that's his job, I'm expecting that, he's going to tell me the right way to do it, right?
Did they post a permit?
In the window.
Do you have one now? You have a copy?
He took it.
He took it because there was, there was some problem at the end. Um, we came over here to speak to Roger about it and Roger said that everything that he did passed inspection, where the problem that we're having now is the zoning. And, you know, like, this is, this is what, you know, after he pulled the boards out and the rails out, that's what it looks like. Um, we basically kept that whole section to my neighbor's house the same. We just extended from where the stairs were to the other section, where we have a moving time off in our yard.
So what are the zoning violations on that?
This was in.
It's too close, the, the corner of the deck is too close.
Oh, speaking of which.
Um, he said, he's stating that, um, it's too close to the, um, to the house next door. This is one picture. So this is where the deck is, but you can see the fence, the neighbor's fence. I guess we're supposed to be within seven and a half feet, Roger told us.
Yeah, how close are you?
What is it? Uh, we're right at the edge. That's how, that's the existing part of the deck. We just, all we did was refinish the, you know, that section.
He says it.
I mean, you just said it over and over. It's close to the fence.
Well, it's right, right to the edge of the fence.
The board has to know what they're, what they're going to vote on, so he'll explain.
It's like two feet from, from there.
Two feet, two feet, yeah.
There's a space, two feet.
And that's exactly how we purchased it.
And when you look at.
No, we don't want to hear that. We want to know where it is now.
Um, two feet, the same, the same, the same place it was. The other, um, oh, he has it on.
It's on that.
So on the map, you see how, you see, you see the property line and you see the deck? That's exactly where it still is.
They just went this way.
We just went the other way, towards, towards the, um, the house.
This is, this is.
That was when they bought the house.
It was, yeah, yeah.
Which, this is all still the same because they used the same frame.
So again, we're, yeah, we're not seeing anything with the new dimensions.
Right, right.
I think the only thing that we have there with the new dimensions was what this contractor did, the drawing.
Yeah, that doesn't mean anything. It's the encroachment that we're, that, that we, that we're looking at. Where is, where does it end? We can give you carte blanche and you can go all the way over to the other property line.
Oh, we're, we're far from the other property line. We have a giant rock in our yard. We're like 10 feet away from the other neighbor's house.
So what he kind of, this is what kind of like Roger just on the line, it kind of looks similar to that right there. And then the measurements are another, in another sheet, in another page.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
No, I know, I understand that.
Let me think about it.
Like, like we said, you know, we had no idea what was going on. Um, the, the, the last thing we heard about was when Roger said, you know, about the zoning, we had to come in and collect the application he gave us. I think the sheet after that one shows you, um, you know, it gives you the dimensions.
I can accept your sign. But see, this one only goes to the end of the house. Same thing as. We don't have an accurate picture that shows.
We have a picture of the front, where the stairs end.
So.
I don't mean a picture picture. I mean a, a drawing that has the dimensions on it.
No, we, we don't. That's what, that's what, um, our contractor did. I, I, he was speaking to Keith the whole time back and forth. Um, you know, the original way we wanted to do it was, we wanted to close in, you see where that box is, we wanted to close in the whole thing coming out of our deck door. And then he told us since we were under, too close to the zoning, Keith told him since we're too close, you know, um, we couldn't build it that way. So that's why we decided to go the other way. And then Keith was sick that week and Roger ended up coming out.
But you know something, this, this isn't about Keith and Roger. This is about you guys. And even if, if there was something that should be, that could be signed off on, I'd feel better until I knew what the dimensions of the deck were.
Yeah, right.
So that we can say, yeah, we approved the deck that's.
Yeah.
10 feet wide and.
I thought there was something in there. Can I see that? Can you get it to us? Sorry.
Well, there's no point in it, you know what I'm saying? This is all this.
He's saying it doesn't show like how far from the other house.
No, I understand. Yeah, so I, no, I, I understand what you're saying, you know, um, it, it won't show because it's like we're right at the deck, just like it shows on that, on the original picture. You know, the fencing comes in and, you know, the house is in an angle, you know, it's in an angle.
You need to mention the end of the existing deck as it's built now to the property, not the one that it touches.
Okay, the other side.
We want to know what that dimension left.
Okay.
In real life is by somebody who can stamp the drawing, like Reed or a land surveyor. And it's pretty simple to get. You got to just call, because the deck's already built, right?
Mm-hmm.
They'd come out and they'd repin what's there and they'd give you a drawing that looks like this with bearing information on it.
Okay.
And it's going to give you a dimension from the end of your new deck to the property line. And based on, I think that's what they're asking for.
Yeah, I mean, every, everyone, every case you've had, Oakallahan Way, there's one right there, this is Minor Street. That's who we're looking for so that we can, we can, we can get signed off on it and then it gets registered as a registry ID.
Okay.
And it says, this is the size of the, of the deck that's encroaching on.
So it's basically the same dimensions of how you're, but, you know, because this is the same dimensions.
You need to have somebody just come out and do it for you.
Okay.
You, you see your mortgage, um, the, uh, the plan for your mortgage, it's in it lives in there?
Yep.
Something like that that shows now the new dimensions of the deck.
Okay, could do that.
Okay, do you know, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. We, we want to go the right way, I mean, you know.
That way, that way it's legal too, because nobody can ever.
Yeah.
Right. When you sell it, uh, yeah, all right. So, maybe next one.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in opposition. What is the will of the board?
Motion to continue, per your platform. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gisano, seconded by Mr. Woods, to continue to February 20th. 20th? Thank you.
Will we have to fill out an application or we just come to 20th?
No, just come. Yeah, you've already got an application.
Okay, thank you very much.
Please send that piece through.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Coe?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Crowley?
Yes, to continue.
Petition of NS Holdings LLC by its attorney Samuel Vitale to allow conversion of an existing institutional structure of capian zoning District BD that encroaches within the minimally required front setback to residential use.
I'm a jury of talent. I made a mistake and told the architect I didn't think we'd get reached this early, so he's not here, but I can.
I am, sir.
Uh, yeah, I, I did. I didn't see him. So he is here. So with me is the architect Phil. We've gone through site plan review, a special permit from the city council. I will tell you that up until then, we thought we had all the approvals that were required. The site plan review, a question was raised, and I think I may have submitted the site plan review, uh, letter, in which they said a variance was required. And then we, we pursued that as to why there was, uh, I can probably bore you with the answer. Um, I think everyone's here familiar with the St. Michael's School, the St. Michael's Church, or St. Michael's Record. They're on the corner of Cottage and Summer. When you're on a corner, you have two fronts. So you have a front on Cottage Street and a front on Summer Street. When you're a church, the first, and when in a business district, there is no required front setback. Um, the only, uh, dimensional regulations that apply in a business district are 50 feet of frontage and height aren't more than five stories. Putting that aside, when you're in institutional means like a church or a school, you can go in any district. So the school's been there many, many a year and the church, and it has long historic significance in the city of Lynn for the Polish community. Um, the church closed, um, the buildings were maintained, and ultimately, um, the properties were put out for sale by the Roman Catholic archdiocese. The Catholic Church owns property under what's called a corporate sole, not S O U L, but S O L E, which means one person owns it all. And that one person is Sean Cardinal O'Malley. He owns everything. And so they originally had a plan that they wanted not to sell the land, but they wanted to lease it for 99 years. But then they realized that, and if you're in a development world, you can't really get financing. So then they, they changed their position. And when they did, and the counselors were involved in this, counselors Walsh and Capano, because they didn't want to see a business there and they wanted to know what kind of residents would go there. So they were involved in all of this. But ultimately, NS Holdings became successful because they approached it from a different perspective, which was they weren't going to tear down the school and the rectory and the church. They were going to maintain those buildings, but they were going to, uh, do refurbishment and alterations and convert them, uh, for residential use as a condominium. So that went through and got city council consent. And then we went to site plan review and it was there that this issue got raised. And the reason for it is if you look at the plan, you'll see that the schools, the schools always had the same setback since the day it was built. But it doesn't have now, for residential use, the requisite, uh, required front setback is supposed to be 10 feet. So it doesn't have 10 feet from Cottage Street, nor does it have 10 feet from Summer Street, the two fronts. Uh, that's the school. The next building is the church. The church would make the requisite front setback of 10 feet for residential use, except the proposal, uh, as shown on the plan, is to, as you come down the front steps of the church to enclose that. When you enclose that and make it like an entryway, then it becomes part of the structure. And then when it becomes part of the structure, then it doesn't have, uh, 10-foot setback. So on that one, I sort of agreed with them, that it needed that because of that. But the others, I, I, the building's there and, and it met the then current, uh, front setback requirement. But because of the site plan review approval and because the site plan approval, uh, is conditioned upon solving that problem, that's why we're here. So what you're going to see is it's going to look like the church, the school, and the rectory, except they're going to be, uh, residences and they're going to be condominiums. And one of the things that, uh, it's going to be called the St. Michael's Condominium, we're going to, uh, recognize the long history of the people who, uh, built that, uh, and developed that by, in the little landscaping area that we're going to have, and we agreed to put a, a plaque or some kind of memorial to, to recognize the fact, notwithstanding that that's going to be the name of the entity. Um, and then the other part of it that made it somewhat difficult to develop is that the, uh, the sellers had many requirements about what they would not allow on the land. And they are part of, uh, the deed restrictions. And notwithstanding my view and the Supreme Court's view that deed restrictions can't last for more than 30 years, the restrictions that they have, because my clients have agreed, are in perpetuity. But they're unrelated to any residential use. Uh, so we took the, that's the other reason I think these people were successful. They were willing to take it, not only maintain the buildings, but they were willing to take it with the restrictions that, uh, the seller wanted to impose about any certain kinds of uses that weren't necessarily incompatible with what my people proposed. So I think that's one of the reasons they got selected to develop the property.
So it's 20 residential condominiums?
Condominiums.
No, no business condominiums?
No, no. If you look at the special permit, the city council only had one condition, and that if there was any change in the plan, it would have to come back to the city council.
Yeah. So what are they going to do with the school? Are they going to point all the brickwork and everything?
Now we're, on my, uh, now we're in and not my expertise. The question was, are they going, what are they going to do with the brickwork on the existing school?
And what are they going to do with the measuring?
The measuring, uh, it's going to remain, uh, fifteen inch repairs, it will be, they will be repaired, re-pointed.
Yeah, whatever else is going on, whatever needs.
Yeah, whatever needs to be repaired will be repaired, yes, yes.
Okay, because it does need some areas.
Yes.
A lot of things.
And we'll, we will be doing that in the permit, the building permit phase.
Yeah, yeah. Now, what about the rectory? Is there any relief requested there on that rectory?
Directories, no, the rectory actually has a requisite setback. The rectory was a residential use already there.
Yeah, right, sure.
So that in effect, there was a mixed use. It was, uh, believe it or not, a rectory is recognized for, for church purposes, but a rectory from the building department world is a residence.
Yeah. So it's pretty clear, huh?
Yeah, and now I think what, what the other part of this, if you look at the site plan approval, is that, uh, and I brought with me the old assessments map, this used to be separate parcels. And that was another issue, the chain of title. But, but, uh, what we're going to do is record what's called a lines of existing ownership, a perimeter plan, and make it all one big parcel.
Right.
One big piece. And that's why the relief that we're seeking would work for both of those corners, Cottage and Summer, where the front's at.
Right. Sounds like a good use of the property to me, really.
Well, it took how long?
Uh, well, the design, design phase took a few months.
Yeah, it took a while.
Yeah, oh, I imagine, well, it's pretty intricate there, you know.
There's two floors in the church. There'll be two floors.
Uh, three.
Three, including, uh, if you go up the stairs, you get the main, the main.
Right, the main sanctuary.
Yeah.
And then we're adding a floor.
Yeah.
And then there'll be an attic also, or it'll be a usable space, uh, master suite.
Yeah, similar to what, uh, some people did on South Street, the old South Street. Right. Did the same, same.
Your which one?
Pardon me?
Your which one?
South Street. Your great house? Before great house, it was a South Street Methodist church? Same, same, same idea.
And how many are talking about?
Twenty.
And they're, they're mortared or carved into their concrete?
No, they're condominiums.
Any other questions from the board?
And how many bedrooms altogether?
Two bedrooms.
Two, yeah. The church will have, a couple of the units, I think, will have three.
Because they're up and down?
Up, uh, yeah. Well, like a townhouse.
Nice.
Will they have a mezzanine in there now?
Uh, yes.
No, what are the bases? Is it a hall downstairs?
Um, the hall in the church, I'm not sure what will be done to it, I think it'll just common space, utilities, laundry, things like that.
A lot of churches have a whole big open space.
Yeah.
It was a very active parish.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think this is a good fit for this thing.
It'll make that whole corner look so much better.
Yeah.
Be an asset.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
I have none.
Anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this project? Anyone here wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in opposition. What is the wish of the board? Motion made by Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Woods to Grant. Please call the roll.
Mr. Webb?
Yes, to Grant.
Mr. DeSona?
Yes, to Grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to Grant.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes, to Grant.
Good luck.
Case number nine-eight-one-oh-one-fifty Essex Street, petition of Paul Yu by his attorney, John Myhose, to allow conversion of an existing two-family structure located in zoning District R four upon an undersized lot, five thousand one hundred and eighty square feet, with front, rear, and side yard encroachments to a three-family structure.
John Myhose, Seventh Frank Street, representing the petition. Petition is to allow conversion of two-family to three-family house. Have submitted claims, four clients, I think they were submitted, we had it in here about a year ago, in September. So we thought it was part of the petition in the first place. Petition has submitted a packing plan. The petitioner has met with Councilor Seer, who's quite a sense, had discussion with him, Councilor Seer said he was in favor of the petition, so long as send down the conditions that he wanted to abide the petition. And we've been told about the conditions, we're willing to abide by the conditions as stated.
Well, this is a letter from Council President Seer. I respectfully request that if the above-mentioned petition is approved, the board place a stipulation that where the driveway is located, that the owner at his expense install a curb cut and repair the sidewalk with concrete to add adequate parking for the side. I know that the owner has spent a lot of money repairing this property, however, as the Ward Three Counselor, I know that this neighborhood has issues in the winter months with the stove due to the large number of multifamily homes. Thank you in advance for your assistance in this matter. Daniel P. Seer, Council President.
We understand that to be the case. As stated, we had a meeting at the location with Councilor Seer, and we wanted to change the, the assumption of that change by the petitioner in order for this thing to be granted. We're willing to abide by it, he will assume all costs.
What's in here?
I'm just looking for the.
Is this what you want?
As stated by Council Seer, he is, Mr. Yu, yes, spending a lot of money refurbishing the building, improving the building.
You're putting a new dormer on it.
Yeah.
Are you going to re-sign, new signing?
You're putting a new dormer in the attic.
As best as signed.
It's existing on there.
What's this?
The color, what are you talking about?
No, no, I'm talking about the materials, the materials, materials. Yeah, can you get a permit to do that?
Vinyl siding. I think it's vinyl siding. It looks like vinyl siding.
Oh, vinyl?
Yeah. That's what's in existence.
Oh, it is.
Right now, yeah. It's going to match what's there.
Yeah, right.
So if you're looking at the building from the front, it would remain the same exterior.
Yeah.
The dormer's built in the back.
All right, so the dormer, as well, well.
Two bedrooms.
It would be exactly what it, what it's there, doesn't it?
Why do you want the third floor? Because the place is vacant, you know?
It's an existing property.
So you want. It's an attic, right now? It should be, I think, the utility before.
I think it's a dormer.
Do you live in this house? No? So it's property, it's an income property to you?
That's correct.
It's a lot of bedrooms.
It's over nine or ten bedrooms in the whole property.
He would be willing to restrict the amount, the amount of bedrooms. So the two bedrooms each floor.
No, it doesn't have to be.
It's not a petition.
Yeah.
Put a condition on it that it only be two bedrooms.
He'd be willing to reduce that to two bedrooms.
Exactly.
I think that's a good fit.
Yeah.
And what is the dormer for? The dormer. You're going to put a dormer on?
The dormer for the back, maybe even a bedroom.
Did you hear that, gentlemen? They'd be willing to go down to two bedrooms for each floor.
That's a condition.
What are you going to do with the rest of the rooms? That means you're talking, you're going to, if you go down to two bedrooms, you're knocking out, what are you going to do with that extra space? What's it going to be?
What, yeah, what is that?
You and I both know it's going to still be a bedroom. I mean, just because you're not calling it a bedroom anymore, doesn't mean it's not going to be a bedroom. You've got rooms on here now that you don't want to bet it that are bedrooms now, that aren't.
They follow studies and.
Yeah, the living rooms and all these things that are attached to bedrooms, we all know they're bedrooms. I mean, let's not kid ourselves, we know they are.
We'd be willing to come in with a reconfigurational plan.
You could redesign the plans.
Exactly.
The stipulation.
I mean, you're opening up a lot of wide open room.
That would be good.
No, I'm just saying, we're willing to come in with a reconfiguration.
Yeah.
So that we, uh, make the rooms larger and make it fit within the parameters of two bedrooms.
Sure. I do want to look at that.
Myhose, what is this?
What is this? Where is it?
Enclosure.
What is it?
Enclosure porch.
That's an enclosed porch?
Shouldn't mention that, that should be noted.
Yeah, no question.
Does it look like another room? It didn't say anything like that.
Client stated, I will come in with a reconfiguration to limit the use of the rooms to two bedrooms each floor.
Did you buy this in two thousand sixteen, January?
Yes.
So.
Okay, how long would it take you to get a new plan ready?
Actually, next meeting.
For the next meeting?
For the next meeting.
Good.
Before you go spending any money, you're going to have to come in and really convince me that there's not going to be ten bedrooms in this structure, so if you don't think you can do it, don't spend the money on the drive. That's, I'm just giving you.
Well, I understand that.
I don't want to see a poor good money out of the bad, you know, but if you, if you can't come in and totally convince me that there's not, you know, ten bedrooms in this house, don't bother.
We understand your problem with it, we'll correct that.
Yeah, I frankly don't see what the hardship here is, where, you know, the sale price for two-family, it's probably worth a lot more than what he paid for it. So to me, this is just, this is just an add another unit for income property. I, I don't really know, I don't see the hardship here at all. So this is a, I don't, I don't know, I've got issues with this one. And, you know, even, even the Council President's letter, you know, if you grant it, and I know that the neighborhood has, you know, parking issues, it's not a wholehearted endorsement for this plan at all, as far as I'm concerned. So. That's, that's how I feel about it.
I just feel like you're sorry, John, that this court has not looked favorable to increasing two for three in these kind of establishments.
I understand that.
Just like Dan said, you know, good money out of the bad, I need to see you do that.
Well, I'll speak with my clients, we'll come in with, we request that we continue for the next meeting.
Sure.
I'll just come back in and address you again.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in favor. Anyone in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
Go along with what the attorney wants to continue to February twentieth? So make a motion that we continue it to February second, twentieth.
Motion by Mr. Cole to continue this to February second, to reconfigure the rooms, seconded by Mr. Callen. Please call the roll.
Mr. Webb?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. DeSona?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to continue.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes, to continue.
Is anybody here for Boston Street? I hope not. Right, but I see it on here, but I didn't know if anybody else got to notice, so that's why I was asking. So what we have left is Nahon Street, right? I didn't miss anything. Continued case, petitioner one thirty-nine Nahon Street LLC by its attorney Samuel Vitale, to allow basement alterations to an existing non-conforming two-family residence in zoning District R five located upon an undersized lot, six thousand three hundred and twelve square feet, having insufficient frontage, forty-seven feet, sixty-six inches, and existing parking spaces within minimally required setbacks to create additional residential dwelling space for human occupancy below street level grade. And this was continued, I believe, for one of the things was the parking?
As I understood it, was continued for a view, I was actually, I was actually at both, I was late.
Yeah, but that one of them was the parking.
Excuse me?
One of them was the parking, too.
Awesome.
Yeah, awesome.
So, so, let me just, well, I know that there were two site visits, and so those of you who were there saw that the second means of egress is being constructed, those of you who entered the building saw that the kitchen was there, and that the way out of the unit was there. The question was the access to the parking. I know that the clerk told me that adjoining property on his deed was submitted, I know we submitted our deeds, and, and then, let me just say that since then, I was contacted by an attorney on behalf of the butter, Mr. Snowden, and that was a good development in that I think that Attorney McGoyne represents Mr. Snowden, as I understand it, was able to explain what registered land means with respect to the existence of the right of way over Mr. Snowden's property. And there's also, I know Mr. Snowden has used it according to Attorney McGoyne for many, many years, but that there were concerns, and so I spoke with Attorney McGoyne, and then I made a proposal to Attorney McGoyne, and I want to just tell you, as I understand it, that if these conditions were to be satisfied, then I think it would be a win-win for everybody. And let me explain why. You have registered land, one of the good things about registered land, if you're a registered land owner, is that someone cannot claim what's called adverse possession or easement by prescription, which means, hey, I've used this, I think I've given the example in the past, people cut across somebody's lawn to go to the beach, and they continue to do it, and they continue to do it, and even though they may not own it, they may have a right to continue to do it because it's been done, if you can prove all of the elements of adverse possession. But if you have registered land, the theory of adverse possession doesn't prevail. You could have used it, but it's not registered, it's not recognized by the land court. So the use of the land, or putting even a structure on a property that's had, has adverse, that has registered, been registered with the land court, you can't get ownership of. So the fact is that the plan that exists and the two deeds, Mrs. Snowden's and the petitioner's, both contain the same language. And that language says that Mrs. Snowden's land is subject to this right of way for the benefit of the petitioner's land. So that it means that the petitioner has a right to use that portion, even though it's within the bounds of Mrs. Snowden's property line, to access their property. That's the reality, okay?
But not to park there, right?
Excuse me?
Not to park there.
Well, we come to that. The petitioner doesn't propose to park there, the question is whether anybody can park there. I understand that for Mrs. Snowden and her attorney, that she in fact has parked in the right of way.
But she parks under her deck.
Well, we're going to come to, you're ahead of me, you're getting to the end of the story.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, there were certain questions that were raised that were legitimate questions. One of them was the gate, okay? And we only have what's called anecdotal, historical information about the gate because my people haven't owned it, and haven't been there as long as Mrs. Snowden, okay? But there's no question there's a gate, you saw it, and I think Mrs. Snowden's concern was its appearance, its indisappear, so we have a simple solution on the gate.
Take it down.
Take it down. So remove it, okay? The second was that apparently, that all these years, Mrs. Snowden has paid somebody to plow the way because it's not a street, it's not an accepted, they call accepted public way. So she's borne the expense solely to have it plowed, and if it needed maintenance, which you may, you know, paving or whatever. So to address that, Attorney McGoyne asked me, and I asked the petitioners if they would agree, and they did agree, that if in fact they were going to use it to access the rear of their property, that they would then enter an agreement to share the cost of plowing, maintenance, and whatever. And further, that that be memorialized in a written document, because registered land, I mean, this property's been owned since, been with this right of way since nineteen forty-six, and nobody's going to be here forever, so that we want to make certain that subsequent owners, be it successors here or successors there, are bound by the same arrangement. So that was agreeable. And then, as you pointed out, and I think I said, and when Mr. DeSona had some questions, we don't want to deprive Mrs. Snowden of her ability to park on her property, it's just we want to be able to access. And so I understand from Attorney McGoyne that there's a tenant in Mrs. Snowden's who parks under the deck, and that Mrs. Snowden believes that she can park under the deck, and that just takes me to the last part of what I had in this letter, which is that we wanted to be certain, if people, instead of parking parallel in the right of way of their parking, perpendicular under the deck, that when the time comes to plow, we can get the plow down and around and plow it out. I don't know how they do it now, so all of that was put in a letter from me to Mrs. Snowden's attorney, which I'd be glad to share with you, and indicate that should the petition be granted, then we would agree to those conditions as part of the approval, and we think it's, again, the newest to the benefit of, only, the only people really in the world who care about this is Mrs. Snowden, who's lived there for many, many years, and the petitioner who is going forward to sprinkle a building that wasn't sprinkled, putting a second means of egress to a basement apartment that didn't have it, and doing everything that was required under the state building code to make it a lawful unit.
Sam, I have a question. First of all, I'm Bob Lavoy, I'm Irene Snowden's son-in-law, okay?
Yeah, but when it's your turn.
Okay.
Don't worry, we're going to get to you. I'm trying to remember if there's enough room under that deck for two cars.
Well, I remember seeing a car, when, when, when Mike, when it was raised, that issue about can you plow, I remember seeing a car under the deck. I remember seeing a car under the deck.
Oh, why don't we ask Mrs. Snowden?
Yeah.
But it goes down the street like this.
No, can you park two cars underneath that?
Then it veers off like this, so I have, it's nine fourteen feet all the way down.
Oh, it narrows.
Fourteen, yes. It, no, it waits.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that.
We think, we think you can get two cars.
Yeah.
Okay, down here without a problem. In the right of way, it'd still be there.
It's one thing about parking, you can't, you have to know.
I'd like to see that.
That's why, that's why I'm going to get a stipulation that this whole thing, being professional land surveyor, to draw it all up, like the two lots you get on the other side, and then you get one in the, and everything, include everything in one package, even include that boarding on the ladder, and I think it would solve the whole thing.
Well, we could, we could do, we could do what's called, you know, a sketch plan or a segment plan? What I'm trying to avoid, okay, is the land court is like out of the days of Charles Dickens.
No, no, I know, I know.
So to get a plan approved in the land court, takes like an act of Congress.
Yeah.
So however, if you do what's called a segment plan or a sketch plan,
Yeah, right.
Then we could, we could attach it to the agreement, right?
Yeah, right. Yep, that's fair enough. It's all reasonable. And you can proceed with your project.
Any other questions for me?
I have no questions.
Well, I'm wondering, what is the hardship with this?
The hardship?
Yeah. Why do we have to have this third?
Well, that would be an appropriate question in 1939 when the Board of Appeals granted variance to make a basement apartment.
Well, here we are today in 2000.
Yeah, but, but the difference is, in 2018, this building will be state-of-the-art fire safe, have a sprinkler system, have a second means of egress, have a hardwire system. So that's one choice. Or the other choice is it can exist the way it is without a sprinkler, without a hardwire system.
And without the basement unit?
The basement unit can be occupied because it will then become part of the first floor. But, but the difference is the building won't be sprinkled and it won't have to be hardwired. You only have to sprinkle in a class group three, all right?
I got it. Plus the arrangement won't be worked out for the day.
Well, that's right. Now, what's the incentive for my people to not stand on their rights and say, we'll drive them down every day of the week?
This is 1939, right? With the stable or garage, the first and second floor apartments, right? Over here, this is the traditional apartment on the corner.
Well, they need to get some variance for parking within, you know, that close to the street.
I don't either.
No, I, I think that the, the parking requirement, the design standards are within five feet of the, we asked for that, right? Five feet of the property line and the street line. The right of way is on a street.
Isn't there a, above between the property and the edge of a parking space?
Okay, I was, I was just.
Their property? I don't think that they're within five feet of the, our property line.
No, no, they're above the decision.
You have to have a.
She's going to apply with Barbara.
She withdrew, she got her money back.
Well, ask him.
I think, well, they're further up. I have spoken to McGoyne, but.
So are you guys now for this? Are you changing? You were, you seemed to be against this a month ago, right? Or the last time we were here?
Right.
Are you now for this? Have you worked, you guys all worked out a agreement that Mrs. Snowden should be using one?
Well, let me put it this way. The law is the law. And if I, the law says that I cannot park there, then I have to leave it open. But you see to it that that happens, even though I don't like the idea. And I'm going to try to, I have one car that parks underneath the porch, and that's my basement tenant. And like it's going to snow tomorrow, we're going to try to tandem park. And I'm going to put one car and then my car behind it until we plow it and get out of there. And then I'll park in the front.
Sounds like you're trying to make it work.
Well, that's what it's all about. I mean, it's people.
Can I show you what she's talking about?
People have to give a little bit together.
Absolutely.
None of that really has to do with the three family. I'm kind of, are you opposed or for the three family, I guess is my question.
We have some concerns, okay? And the concerns are, you know, we've always taken care of the right of way. You've got to understand, Mrs. Snowden has had this for sixty years, almost, okay? And she's parked there for sixty years. And now somebody's saying you can't park there anymore, all right? So that's a big disruption, you know? She's paid taxes, she's maintained the property, and she's maintained that right of way for her cost. She's tarred it, she's maintained it, she's plowed it, okay, for sixty years. And then somebody comes and says, well, you know, we need the right of way now, all right? And like she says, if it's the law, it's the law, you know? She was able to work it out, but, you know, she just wants to make some concessions, make sure she has parking available. She's been there sixty years.
I have a question. Do you remember that this property came before the Board of Appeals back in 2000 to make it a three-family? Do you remember that? There's the same petition that, that we're hearing. Paula Marica owned it at the time.
Paula, yeah.
And she brought it to this board and then it was withdrawn. You don't remember that?
No.
So did you deny it at that time?
Well, I don't, I don't know why it was withdrawn.
Doesn't say.
Usually that means it wasn't done pass at the time, but I don't know.
Withdrawn without prejudice, right?
The petitioner got her money back and I just didn't know if you remembered that.
No, I don't.
I didn't even know she approached, approached you, is it?
Attorney Vitale, when I look at this from November 9th, 1939, it says, "Permit for repairs and alterations." I guess that used to be a stable and a garage. Convert existing stable and garage to two-family dwelling. Raise the building, la, la, la.
That's a different, that's a different property. That's 141. That was at the rear.
So what?
The address of this is 139.
All right, but you're, you're the one that brought up that the petition was a...
No, what I'm just saying, here's the hardship. The hardships to everybody who, you understand that whether somebody's maintained it, parked on it, done whatever, I explained to you. And it's not my people, it's the law in Massachusetts. This is a registered passage. You cannot get adverse possession or easement by prescription on registered land. Now, the fact that people haven't driven down that right of way doesn't mean that these people don't have a right to drive down that right of way. And as I said to you, think of the last hearing. Nobody wants to deprive Mrs. Snowden of anything. You should be looking at it from the perspective of, we have a right to the rear of that property, for whatever purpose. It says, "For whatever purposes streets are used in the city of Lynn." And so whether it's a two-family or a three-family, a right exists to get to the rear of that property. There was a gate, we removed the gate. So now we, we've removed the gate. Now, in terms of access, the only people going down there are going to be these folks and Mrs. Snowden. And so how, if they can get along and have that utilized and everyone winds up essentially with a better piece of property next door, with a roadway that she now pays 100% of the expense to maintain that she no longer will because she's got somebody else who will pay. And you have a property that before had only, on a good day, two parking spaces, and now it has available three more. It seems to me that this petitioner ought to get some consideration for what the value is that they're adding to that area by providing parking that wasn't otherwise there, maintaining a right of way and sharing in the expense that was being borne by one individual, and modernizing the structure with a sprinkler system and a hardwire system. It seems to me that at the end of the day, there's a benefit to the city, to the petitioner, and to Mrs. Snowden.
Adam Chan, I have a question. We talked about, at the site visit, about moving those two parking spaces down both into the main building.
Yeah, this is.
It didn't seem like, I'm not knowing.
What does this build, a two-family apartment?
Remember they have the two parking spaces kind of far, do you handle that?
It was out back.
I know, you want to move.
Which, are you talking about the two in the drive on the high?
The two on the other property.
Oh, that's a different, yeah, on the back side, yeah.
Yeah, then we got to move, take the two that were much closer to the building.
Right, because there's a, there's a stairway, a little step that goes up to this side. You're talking about very parallel.
Right up to the garage and the door and put those two sedents or, I don't know, closer to them.
Yeah, well, that could be included in the motion.
That's what I thought, that Mr. Callen wanted a plan that showed it.
Yeah, yeah, I want a plan that showed it.
So I, so there was, there's no misunderstanding. I think you're talking about, let me get my bearings here. You were talking about.
Where is the parking?
Wait, wait. So you're talking, instead of putting it here, putting it there?
It's going to be down here, I think, yeah, right up to the garage, which is right about here, yeah. And then it's a much, much easier access. Just seemed like a good plan, even for everybody concerned because even the people that were repulsed, let them know that those two, you know, about theirs. So is that the plan with the five parking?
This is, this is the one that shows on site. The two that were within the five foot.
Yes.
The one at the rear, right, into the right of way. And this is, we were talking about here, but you're talking about there.
Also, you're going to see it's on there. Was she saying one is here with these cars?
Well, she passed in a vehicle this way.
Right, yeah. Two of them, I saw two of them.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too. So that what, I think that's the plan Mr. Callen wants to see. Is with not only showing these spaces on this lot, but the ones on this lot and over there.
Yes. Oh, thank you.
That's what I was asking, I want to get the all of those ones next to the house. They're certified, but they're too close.
Who owns the right of way? That they are, they're spaces, city?
It just seems like they're run to a problem.
Well, this is your property.
Yeah, I know, but there was a parking like this.
Yeah.
It's a joint venture.
Yeah, who owns the right of way?
They both do.
Both, both flats.
You and you.
Okay.
Both flats own it. So whether this happens or not, it's coming on another.
City's already responsible, they're not in it.
They're saying it's going in.
So this property flies or not. Let me see if they're, under the deck, it's, you don't have that five-foot buffer, huh? See what happens to you.
Well, I don't show up on the professional.
Are you saying five, five-foot buffer max size? Yeah, they want the deck coming out. Yeah, they got the wall, man.
That was what was proposed to me by Attorney McGoyne. That's what my clients agreed to.
Maybe that would be part of overall global kind of agreement.
We, we agreed, we agreed to try and work the situation out for all parties involved. Well, that's what we tried to do, all right? But as long as she has a park, because she doesn't really want.
Well, I have a question about how many parking spaces are you going to put down?
We're going to have the requisite number.
In the backyard?
So we, we comply with the zoning ordinance because they have a three-family, you need five spaces. For a two-family, you need three.
I understand.
She's asking, Sam.
I would like to have a right.
Excuse me?
She's asking, I'm going to get a.
That's why we get professional mansaken.
At the end of the right of way?
Yes, at the end of the one, yeah.
Why?
That's the question.
Because it's two in front already?
Yeah, she's, that's, show a plan maybe.
Professional mansaken there, you got to get a plan. That's what it is.
There are two spaces that currently exist in the front. They're right here, in the drive. And then so at the end of the right of way, we proposed one. And what they're talking about is my people own the rest of the land or areas, so there would be no question, there's two spaces there.
It must be as cheap as.
Because in an apartment house, which insists you can park. So there we get to five, buddy. One, two, three, four, five. Excuse me? No, no, this is a separate park, there's great difference. This is on, this is on the beach. It was, it was. All they need is a gate or a section down. But we would have that because it serves the backups.
Mrs. Chan.
Yes. We're still discussing here. What?
Yeah. Can I bring something up?
Wait, any other questions from the board? Anyone, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this position? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none, the hearing is closed for those wishing to speak, speak in favor. Anyone in opposition or trying to make up their mind?
Yeah.
What you, you're going to come up and give your name and your address, please?
Suzy Davis, Freddie Rose Swanscott.
Did you get that?
I didn't. I just have a concern over Beach because the property owners beside Mrs. Snowden's property also own properties on Beach. And if you have that parking behind through the right of way, it will have access and my concern for her, as well as everybody's safety, is anyone coming from Beach wanting to come towards Tudor?
The answer is no. The plan doesn't show that.
Thank you for letting me finish.
Excuse me?
Thank you for letting me finish.
Well, it's always good to hear from people from Swanscott, so I'm glad to hear them.
Don't be disrespectful.
I'm not being disrespectful.
Yes, you are.
It's a point of fact.
You have your chance, Sam.
All right, she has.
She has the floor, right? All fans.
No, but it's understandable what he's saying, but you have the floor.
Thank you. Whether it's, I, I think it's not unreasonable to be concerned where you have a property owner on many different locations and behind these properties, they will adjoint, and that's traffic. And that's what I wanted to present. That's all, whether I'm from Swanscott, Lynn, or California. So thanks for that.
And as the board knows, and I want to make clear, this is a board that's governed by the state statute and by the cases that are decided. People who get noticed are abutters or abutters to abutters within 300 feet. Those people are determined to be what's called parties in interest. They have a rebuttable presumption. And unless they can articulate a specific harm or injury to their property, they have no standing. So you can have somebody come here from Minnesota and express an opinion. But whether they rise to the level of people who have standing under the Massachusetts state statute or under the Lynn's own order is, is a different question. So this board is terrific in letting people express their opinions. But at some point, it's governed by what the state statute says and what the case law says.
Yes, you agree, they have to be persons in interest.
Anyone else wishing to speak against this?
I'm not being prejudiced, I mean, it's that when behind Swanscott, Bob, that our attorney Vitale or Randy Swanson expressed our view, there's actually laws up in City Hall that cycle.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
I think that's what probably, knowing attorney Vitale, he's bringing up complaints about, he certainly would never, you know, say anything about a woman talking. Sounded to me like there's something about some kind of law or a flick to the off.
Thank you.
That should be much into, I'll, I volunteer to help with this a little bit.
Hearing, anyone else wishing to speak?
We just, either. My name's Bob Lavoy. Okay, and I'm from Swanscott, Mass. as well.
Oh, wow.
Yep, 15 Cliff Road. We, we want to work it out, really, with these folks, okay? We're not here to fight, you know, fight the laws or whatever because we know it's a right of way and we were told what the right of way does, okay? But you've just got to understand that all we're trying to do is protect, protect her because she's been parking there for 60 years. And then all of a sudden, somebody springs it saying you can't park there anymore. Anybody would be upset with that one, okay? Any one of yous who's parked there for 60 years would say, oh my God, what's going on? Okay, so as long as she gets parking, okay? And we can make some agreements and concessions with them, we'll work it out with her.
Yeah, we're trying to work that out with a professional lands over there. Understand?
Yeah, I understand. But I'm not sure, okay, where the parking is. I, I know you can fit two cars there, okay?
Well, this can't.
Well, no, I understand. All right. It'll, 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 it'll show, but the, you know, and the right of way will still be there. If you put one here and one right here, it's going to come like this, back to back. And this right of way will still exist, so I think. But as long as there's no restriction with parking right here because it's right next to them.
And also. We've never had, we've never had Gary Ginni, you know, owner. We've never, we've never tried to interfere with someone else's parking.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Our, our issue was we had a right of way. We believed and we know we have availability of one spot. What we were trying to do was meet the, meet the requirements for the parking. So that was our issue. What happened, I think, just a misunderstanding because, you know, Mrs. Snowden was parking there, thought she owned it, so. We never said, and it was never our intention to take away anybody's parking. We're not trying to be bad neighbors. We've been, we've made improvements. We, we bought a, a house that had a, three inhabitants and we quickly realized it wasn't the correct way to do it, so we, we're trying to do that. And we got the, looked through the requirement. We just have to sprinkle a hallway. We just had to sprinkle a hallway, at that point, it's, it's not that much more, it's been for the whole house. So, so we're doing that, and, uh, you know, we're, we're invested in the community.
Yeah, you have, you have that other work, you've been in here before, and it comes out much.
Right, we, we've been invested in the community, we continue to try to be a good neighbor in the community, haven't looked for anything other than what we think should be there. Thank you.
Oh, I have one thing.
There's a whole more question.
Go ahead.
Just, so if you don't get approval for a three family, then you would most likely rent that out as a bedroom downstairs, along with the apartment on the section on the main floor. Correct.
Yeah, we, uh, we bought it looking for the, as we bought it, because of the abutment of our properties. Uh, we look for it as, as a three, uh, we know it was, was operated as a three family for years and years and years. I don't know if the existing tenants caused any problems in the neighborhood or not. We have to, we're gonna clean up the back area, which, you don't know what they were trying to do there.
What's that, the courtyard you're talking about? The area with the round granite?
Yes.
That's beautiful in there, they're gonna improve that.
We're trying to make it, you know, something nice. Something nice, be a place to sit, be, I was thinking one of people's to congregate there, but something, so...
I do want to commend you for what you did for the people who's had the big fire.
Well, thank you.
You know, I thought that was very neighborly of you to have that last Friday night, and to have people be able to go down and give gift cards, or clothing, or whatever, and that you gave a portion of the receipts for Friday night, that was very neighborly.
Thank you, we gave about 20% of our sales, so we wrote a check today, so... And we did, uh, we, I think it was $11,800, so... And here we have some gift cards and some gift receipts. We did a similar function between, uh, a fire in Cambridge, and we don't have it, it's rest of Cambridge, but, uh, we knew some of the people, and, uh... So we had our own fire, and know what we did with those 19 residents, and we made sure, uh, we had, Red Cross did a great job that morning, that early morning, but we made sure we got the people to the hotels, and got them to, we paid for Uber, we couldn't take them in a car. And the MBTA was great that morning with the bus, so, uh, and we're trying to, it's been a long process to rebuild that property. We know we've incurred some noise in the neighborhood, but we're trying to do it as quickly and efficiently as possible.
So, all you're hoping for is you're gonna have two parking spaces? Is that what you're hoping?
I guess.
No, 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 I'm asking.
Yeah.
That your main concern is to be able to park two cars down there?
Yeah. Well, only, and I'll tell you the reason why. It's because there's some, that, that area has been, uh, converted, a lot of those houses have been converted from, uh, single family to four families or something like that.
Listen, I live around the corner from you.
And they all...
You don't have to tell me, I live right around the corner.
So you understand. And a lot of those big vans, uh, that you probably saw through the summer, they live in, at 300 Lynch Drive, but they won't allow them in their parking spaces over there. But they cover over in the Hudson Street. You know, so that's not fair, if they're taking our spaces.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's just not fair to do.
I don't know if they could, if you could petition for residential parking, I don't know if you could do that down there, but it's...
Probably not.
Yeah, probably not, because of the beach.
Because of the beach.
Beach, yeah.
Yeah, because of the beach. And that's why we live there. Because of the beach.
Any other questions from the board?
I have none.
Do it, Eddie.
No.
I think you need to change the plot, because everybody...
Well, I just, I know, I just noticed it when we came in, and it doesn't work. Hearing, no objections. The hearing is closed for those that are against this petition. What is the wish of the board?
We want the petition being granted with the stipulation, um, could you come up, Mr. Callen, give us, if we're telling the wordy, on that stipulation? That it be a professional mansur there to take care of all the parking spaces, and then you ask for other, whether they had to be included, and you do... Yeah, or, could you email it to Mary?
Email, excuse me, what do you want to...
Well, we decided about the other parking spaces, the other, the other two that you're gonna give.
I understood from Mr. Callen, he wants a plan that shows everybody's parking, right?
Right, well, I'm, I'm just saying about, yes, the two, the two parking spaces out front that really aren't legal, that he wants.
No, that's why we came in.
I understand that. And, uh, the two, see, you know what bothers me? I'm not gonna tell you that I'm against this, I'm not gonna tell you I'm for it either. I'm, I, what bothers me is those two buildings that you own over there, that's been grandfathered, that anybody can park anyplace, and you don't have enough parking for those, all those people that live there. And they all have to find places to park. And it bothers me that I'm gonna take two parking spaces away from the people that are over there, to give it to this new place so that you can have another tenant. That, that bothers me.
No, but that's because those requirements of the city of Lynn zone ordinance say you need X amount of spaces of X Y design.
Yeah.
And so, I, I've used this analogy before, okay? Uh, I don't do puzzles, but my wife does. And when you have a jigsaw puzzle, I tell people, if you move one piece on the board, it affects other pieces, and, and that's what you're saying, I hear you there. But we've had this conversation, they'll tell you, the first thing I said is, oh, don't do anything to the landscape, because I thought the property was...
It's lovely.
Lovely, that's what I'm saying. But, but it's a trade-off, there's only so much space, and there's only so much room, and we're trying to accommodate the, the need for parking, and it, and, and they're, they're an unusual petitioner, and they, they have access to other parking. There are other people who come before you who don't. And you, and then you're forced to make a choice, it's, okay, is three better than none? Or is, is five what's required, and they only have three, I mean, it's, it's a choice you have to make. But here, we're, we're fortunate that we've got enough spaces and enough land and access that we can meet the requirement.
Not for all those apartments you cut.
There is no requirement for those apartments.
I understand that, but that doesn't mean it doesn't bother me, just because that was, that was them.
But that goes to when the city of Lynn, where, where was the city of Lynn when they, they finally adopted a parking requirement, when? 1964, there was zoning here since 1925. Automobiles didn't appear in Lynn in 1964. They were here long before. And, and you have right now, in the central business district, what's the parking required in the central business district? None. And you have every day, people coming and making investments, wanting to put more activity in the central business district. So that what's gonna happen is that there's gonna be a pressure, and it's gonna be on those city lots. The, the city has po, the one person who owns parking in this downtown area is the city of Lynn. And, and, and there was a movement to take meters out, to do, they're trying to balance, uh, but, but there are always trade-offs, and I think what you're trying to do, and no one ever falls aboard, because I think anybody understands that your objective is to try to do what's in the city's interest. But when there's something I think that has more good than bad, it seems to me to sort of, that's why the scales of justice are the scales of justice, you balance, I think there's more good.
That's why I'm having a hard time balancing, because if that third apartment wasn't there, those two parking spaces, we wouldn't be taking away from the people who live in the other buildings.
If, if I can interject, I know it was a legal apartment, but the apartment was there for years.
I mean, yeah, anybody who walked inside, saw, knew that.
I sort of look at it, we're not really increasing a, a car.
Well, you look at it because you own it.
Oh, sure. And I'm saying, it, what was there to what we're doing, is we, you could use the argument, we're taking one car off the street by using the right of way into the back spot, space.
You could, you could also say, have the argument that no one's ever gonna walk that 100 yards from the building to that back space, they're gonna park right out in front of the building like everybody else does, and walk right in. They're gonna try to jam two or three cars in behind the building instead of that one parking space that's allotted back there, too. I have a lot of the same trouble in my mind that, that the chairman, chairwoman does, and, I mean, I'm trying to wrap my head around, at the end of the day, the right of way isn't the issue here. The parking is the issue, and adding the third, the third residence to this building is the issue. That, and that's the issue that we've all been, you know, struggling with. I know everybody on the board has a different opinion, but it was being used illegally as a three family, because you have the opportunity to fix that, that it's not being illegally used as a three family. And if we say, no, yes, you could easily increase a bedroom down there for you, for unit one, but that's not gonna add three cars like adding another apartment would easily, though, so there's arguments on both sides.
It isn't whether it adds cars, whether the requirement for adding cars is it.
Sam, I sat here and listened to you for a half hour, I'm, I've talked for two minutes, just let me finish. And I'm not even saying, I'm not even saying I'm against it. I'm just saying I'm struggling with the fact that it's not about the right of way. I find it hard to believe that people are gonna walk into an already crowded parking lot and look for a parking space, because I guarantee people are gonna park in those two that were allotted to this, this building, for an apartment that we're trying to jam into an already busy area, like the people that sat here before you. They wanted to add a three fam, two family or a three family in an already busy area. That's, that's the, that's the, the issue at hand here, is the area, the density, and the apartment.
It also is the parking formula. Because the parking formula makes a big assumption, okay? There are plenty of people who live in single-family homes that have more than two cars. There are plenty of people who live in apartments that have no cars. But the formula is across the board, and the formula is arbitrary. So, that's the formula, we're trying to meet the formula. It could very well be that, in this, if it was a three unit, that there might only be three cars, one for each unit. Because right now, with, with two, we've got two cars, okay? So I could argue, well, we're gonna add a unit, but that doesn't mean we're gonna have five cars, it means we're gonna maybe have three. And we got parking for three, on our land.
But the question isn't whether the formula's right or the formula's wrong, is are you trying to force what you're trying to do, or does it just fall into place and happen, because you've got the amount of space you need?
We're, we're trying to follow what the building department said, when they came down, they said, this unit needs another means of ingress. And if it's a three family, you need to sprinkle it. These people said, okay. So that satisfies the building code, now we've got the, the zoning code. And if anything, these people can meet the zoning code requirement, whether it's a good requirement, or a smart requirement, or one that's even gonna be required, in reality, remains to be seen. But if the requirement is that you have to have, and the zone ordinance, they didn't draft, the zone ordinance says you can park within 200 feet if you have an apartment house use. That's what the ordinance says. So are they taking advantage of what the ordinance says? The answer is yes.
You know that room that's... You know the room that's across from the kitchen? It's on the way to the bathroom, and it says storage? And then you have that other room in the back, that's more storage or whatever. See, when I look at that with a window in it, I see wall and bedroom.
Does utilities have one?
No, I'm not talking about that one, I'm talking about the one that says it's wide open in the middle of the house, and it's wide open, like...
Show them, show them the plan.
Or you're gonna, like, I'm curious, no, it's, or you're gonna have storage there, that's wide open, you know what I mean? It's like, it's like this room across from the kitchen, you're gonna store stuff, that's...
Our intention...
Yeah?
Is not to rent it out as a bed. Now, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, as you said, you look at rooms, and you can make a dining, you can make a living room, a bed, that's not our intention. Of our, of our properties, we do an annual, uh, walk-through of our apartments to make sure we don't have overcrowding. As we look at that as a one-bedroom apartment, that's what we're gonna rent it out as, we're not gonna rent it out as a two-bedroom.
So that could be like a dining area, it certainly isn't gonna be storage. I mean, the whole room is wide open, what are you gonna store?
Always in the washer, dryer, utility, there's no room for another bedroom.
Oh, you can keep... We're not, it's not, we're not gonna rent that out as a two-bedroom. We looked at that, we saw it was already an apartment illegal, as, as I, as it was, and we're just trying to rectify that. We're not, we're not adding any pot to the building, is, is, turning to the guy, so we're trying to meet the code, and trying to do it the correct way. As to the rest of the things, because...
Well, for me to even consider this, you would have to, at the back, right at the back, you know, where that beautiful circle or brick thing is, you, there is, there is some parking over there? You'd have to designate, you'd have to put a, a gate or something there, so that the people in that house can just walk right from there, from that parking spot, to get in, and not have to walk the whole length of that place. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Well, that's...
Any questions?
In a parking place.
You're talking about the two spots that are being...
Right. Don't worry, I mean, I want you to show me where you're gonna make a gate.
This is what I think Mr. Wood was talking about, too. Talking about this area right here, or right, right here, yeah.
With the back of the houses, yeah.
Right, Mr. Wood said the same thing, he wanted it closer. He wanted it closer.
Because originally, you had it way down the other end.
Yeah. And that's why Mr. Callen wants to...
And I don't think anybody's gonna, like they say, walk all that distance, if you put a gate or something right there, the back...
I'm gonna mention that to the mansur there, right?
Yes, well, I'm gonna get the notes from Mary.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And, and probably the agreement is gonna be the, uh, the written agreement between the two parties that get any sharing cost of...
That's what my letter says, that's what...
The letter right here, yeah.
So it's an agreement, right?
Yeah, so that would be, we have, uh, we have buildings in the area, we don't really own many single-family homes. We're more apartments, large properties up to...
Yeah, but that's a delicious place, that's delicious.
And that was the only reason it interested us for, you know, I don't wanna take a two-corner, it's somewhat the beauty, it's that, little area in the back is full, oasis. So, but we have, my point was there, we have somebody that plots, so...
Yeah, the granite, the granite circle, right? Plant plenty of geraniums.
They're very hard, I use hard geraniums.
It used to be a high tech. It was a high tech.
Was it?
We're not doing that.
It was better when the first you got days.
What, what is the wish of the board? We can go on and on and on here, what is the wish of the board?
Second.
To grant with stipulations.
Yeah. And, uh, I'll say to...
And the stipulations being, let's say that the stipulations are...
Stipulations are that they hire a professional mansur there, and make a master plan of all this parking, and then to include this letter, did you say?
That, that's, that's what I proposed to Attorney McGoyne, and I understood that that was agreeable.
Yeah, so that will be in that plan, too, right?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna do, we're gonna do a plan, but that, 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 that letter's gonna be memorialized in an agreement between myself and Attorney McGoyne. And then we're gonna attach, as I said, a segment or a sketch.
Make sure that Mary is some information on that.
Sam, who is the Senator Boye representative?
Mrs. Snowden.
Oh, why didn't she get that?
Uh, she told me she couldn't be here, she, she called and contacted me at the end of last week. I know she went to the property, then she contacted me again. And then we had a discussion after she had talked with Mrs. Snowden, and then she called to tell me today she wouldn't be here, and then I said I would represent to the board, and I sent it first to her, and then I would present it to the board.
We had an effort for this morning, okay, and she couldn't make it.
Mr. Woods, did you, did you second that? Did you wanna say anything, Mr. Cole?
Just, this, the, the whole issue of the conversions is something the diamond district, have, we've been pretty adamant about, I, I don't know how many we've granted, but we've denied majority of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of, we're setting a precedent. And we gotta consider that.
Well, I, I'm not really upset about that.
And it's not about, uh, if someone could do a good job, it's these guys, it's got nothing to do with that, it's got to do with, to me, the...
It feels forced.
Yeah, we're doing it, you know, we've been, like I said, those areas are tremendously dense. And the parking is, is horrendous, and, uh, the state caused part of that by limiting, taking 300 spaces out of the, the high beach.
Yeah, they do that.
They took spaces off the beach, yeah.
Yeah. 300, so they end up in yah, 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 yah.
Yeah.
But, uh, again, we've been pretty consistent, that's all I'm gonna say on that issue.
And I had to go up, uh, and one of, one of the trucks kept a parking in front of my house, and I was trying to rent my apartment, all right, because we have two townhouses. And, uh, I went up to him and I said, do you see that sign? I said, I'm trying to rent this apartment, but they can't even see the sign, because your truck is so big, covers everything. All right, so, he didn't speak... Alright, so, he didn't speak very good English. And he said, "Well, they won't really be parked over there where I live." I says, "Well, you better find someplace else to park." And then it was just one...
Are we, are we voting here to continue this case, so we see...
No, we're not.
Well, Alan, wait a minute. Are we voting to continue this place, this, to see the parking, if it's, it's gonna be enough room for her to have two spaces?
What was the motion?
Hmm?
What was the motion? Mr. Callen?
To grant.
What was the motion?
He made a motion...
Oh, okay.
To grant with stipulations, is that the motion?
Yeah, the stipulation that a master plan, that a professional Lansky there, all the parking be prepared.
But do we think we would rather see that before we grant?
They're voting on the motion, right?
They're voting on the motion, right?
Hmm?
They're voting on the motion, the table, right? And voting.
Isn't the vote just to give her something she already had anyway?
No.
More?
Do you, you know what the report has been?
Give her more than...
Just need the plan first.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the table.
Yeah, call the roll.
Roll.
Well, I wanna know what I'm calling the roll for.
Yeah.
To grant.
Motion was made and seconded.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Mr. Wood.
I mean, he's, he's gotta get the parking plan.
Please, motion made by Mr. Callen to grant with stipulations, seconded by Mr. Wood, please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Just to grant.
Mr. Jussono?
No.
Mr. Cole?
No.
Mrs. Callen?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Curran?
No. That's why I wanted to do it the other way.
And that's no representation of you gentlemen, the government do, you do a fine job in the city, this one just feels forced to me. So, I'm not gonna apologize, but I figured I'd explain it to you, it's no representation of what you guys do.